Good afternoon. My name is Tim Goddard, and I'm your town moderator here in Littleton. I'm joined here by Jim Duggan, our town administrator, and we're going to be previewing the town meeting articles for you, what to expect, on Tuesday, May the 7th. The first thing to note, the town meeting is Tuesday this year. It's been Monday quite often, and Tuesday was found to be, found to give us an extra day to get ready for things, and we're going to debut that this year also. We're going to debut electronic voting. The town voted to go with electronic voting after several voting fiascos, if you will, in the past, and that's going to be a little bit of a learning curve for all of us at town meeting, but I think it's a pretty intuitive system, and I think ultimately it will end up making a more efficient town meeting for everyone, and we hope that you'll feel the same. So we're going to go through the town meeting warrant articles with you, and it won't be just Jim and myself, we'll be relying upon others in town to do that for you. But I'm going to start off with the first three articles, and then we're going to toss it to Ryan Farrar, the Assistant Town Administrator, to talk about the operating budget. The first three articles, which actually will be part of our consent agenda, I suspect. The first article is to accept the annual report of the town. Really, this means to accept the town report that every department contributes to. I know a lot of people feel like it's an opportunity for show and tell, for different reports, but that's actually not the purpose of the article. It's routinely adopted, and we think it'll be on the consent agenda. Likewise, Article 2 is bills from prior years that requires a four-fifths vote by statute, and I don't know, Jim, you might know, if we have any bills this year. Quite often, we have things that just didn't make the deadline to be paid in the fiscal year, and it's always a hard conversation telling the vendor, you've got to wait for a town meeting six months from now to get paid if they didn't get there.
I think this year that we have one that is from one of our town councils that failed to get the necessary invoice in on time. So it's not necessarily on the town side, there are some times that the invoices are slow to get to us, even though we give them fair enough warning, but I think there's one for approximately $1,100 this year.
Yeah, so we think that that's also a candidate for consent because it's a routine article, it recurs annually, and there's never really any controversy. Article 3 is an opportunity for the town to adjust certain line item, budget, line item, line items within the budget, I'm sorry. In other words, if a certain line was running low, you could transfer surplus funds from another department, another line item, to kind of make the department whole. Again, that, we don't know if there are going to be any such adjustments. The Select Board and Finance Committee also have the ability by statute to make those adjustments outside of town meeting, so I don't know. Again, Jim, I don't know if we've got any candidates for that, or we may just pass over that article.
I think we'll probably pass over that one.
Yeah, that happens sometimes, and we, you know, if you don't have it on the warrant, you can't add it after the fact, after the warrant closes. So sometimes, out of an abundance of caution, placeholders have placed on the warrant, and if we don't end up acting on it, so much the better. I think at this point, I'm going to turn things over to Ryan Farrar to talk about Article 4, the town operating budget.
Thank you, Tim. And now we're going to talk about Article 4, which is our fiscal year 2025 budget. Before, my name is Ryan Farrar, I am the Assistant Town Administrator and the Budget and Finance Director for the Town of Littleton. Before I start, I want to thank my finance team, in particular, Robin, Kim, and Michelle for helping myself work through these numbers. I also want to express my thanks to the finance team, in particular, the Chair, Steve Anudie, and the Vice Chair, Fred, for all of their assistance in this exercise this year to come up with a balanced budget to present to the town. Now we're going to move on to some of the slides that will walk through the budget process that we follow this year and where things currently stand. We start our budget process the same way every year by calculating our levy limit. That process includes starting with the prior year levy limit and increasing that levy limit by two and a half percent, adding new growth and any debt exclusions that we may have. That gives us a total levy amount this year for fiscal year 2025 of $51,660,333. So for our next slide, we're going to talk a little bit about definitions of what new growth is and make you aware of that. So the first thing here is new growth, which is the additional tax revenue generated by new construction, renovation, other increases in property tax base during the calendar year. It does not include value increases caused by normal market forces or by revaluations. Fiscal year 2025, our new growth projection was $655,120. We also have excluded debt. Excluded debt is defined as an action taken by a community through a referendum vote to raise funds necessary to pay debt service costs for a particular project from the property tax levy, but outside the limits of Proposition 2 and 1/2. By approving a debt exclusion, a community calculates its annual levy limit under Proposition 2 and 1/2, then adds the excluded debt service cost. An example of excluded debt would be funding for our high school or other large capital projects. So in this case, we have $900,000 in excluded debt that we use for our calculation. We then add for other funds, that includes free cash that we have available, state aid that we receive annually from the state, and local receipts for such things as permit fees, fees from motel taxes, and any other revenue that the town takes in. That provides us with a total revenue amount of $74,165,732. So when, we also have our fiscal management policies, and when we are developing our capital budget, we are supposed to appropriate an amount up to 2 and 1/2 percent of the operating budget for capital items for which long-term borrowing is authorized or for other expenditures of a non-recurring nature. In this case, our total cash available for capital was approximately $2.3 million. When we start our, we started our budget process back in October of 2023. We provided guidelines to our department heads and provided that submission deadline for them to provide that information to the budget team by the end of October. Our direction was that budgets should be level funded, and the finance team will be updating the salary line items. After that exercise, we determined that we had a preliminary nearly $3.4 million budget deficit. The reason for that deficit were attributable to a number of things, including the sewer bedderment assessment that the town is responsible for, for $185,000, an increase in short-term debt associated with the now in-construction senior center and high school tennis courts at $779,000, the perspective of new town employees, which would also have to pay benefits for, at $733,000, and the start of a sewer long-term debt service at $178,000. These items alone totaled approximately $2.5 million. So once that, we had that $3.4 million deficit, we then met with our larger departments and other departments requesting substantial changes in December. The charge to our team was to recommend adjustments to the departmental proposed capital and operating budgets that would keep us within budget. We then were able to then come up with various changes and adjustments to the budget, which then allowed us to release the final or draft budget document to the Select Board and Finance Committee on January 2nd, 2024. The end result and what was presented to the Finance Committee and Select Board at that time is that we were maintaining free cash spending under our $2.327,633 limit, as well as presenting at that time a balanced operating budget. So we now have, and where we stand as of today, an updated capital funding request from free cash of just under 1.5 million, and a balanced FY25 operating budget with a revised total town expenditure of $73,691,273. First, I'd like to highlight some of the things we are planning for in our capital budget. This would be a transfer from free cash, as you'll see in the budget. Some of these items include for DPW, the purchase of an infield groomer for $39,000, the replacement of a street sweeper for $300,000, purchase of a salt brine system, which will assist us with snow removal at $75,000, a facility feasibility study for the DPW building at $60,000, and the replacement of our asphalt hot box for $35,000. Moving along, Police Department has two requests for $200,000 for replacements of up to three vehicles, and $50,000 for basically the updating of some of our 911 software. Moving on, schools, we are requesting a series of replacements for HVAC units on top of our high school, first one being an amount of $120,000. We're also requesting replacement of some flooring at the high school, and that amount's $140,000. The second element that we're asking for, for replacement at the high school for RTU units, HVAC units, is another $125,000 for a separate section of that roof. Moving along, Planning is asking for $30,000 for the recodification of our zoning bylaw, reviewing basically all of our zoning and making changes and cleaning up some of that language. The Town Clerk's Office is requesting $19,000 for pole pads, which will be used at town meeting, and for elections, which would be very helpful in helping residents check in in a more expedient manner. Fire has two requests, the refurbishment of Engine 1 at $175,000, as well as the replacement of Car 11 at $95,000. And finally, we have the Cemetery is requesting $30,000 for a building conditions assessment of their administrative building at the Cemetery. These costs or capital requests that we've approved both through the Select Board and recommended by the Finance Committee are just under $1.5 million. We also have a few additional pieces that are being funded through other funding sources. The first that you'll see is a separate article, is a transfer from the Capital Stabilization Fund for just under $3 million for the renovation of the Indian Hill project, or Indian Hill Building, which is 3236 King Street. The hope is to utilize those funds to be able to then house our Parks and Recreation Commission on Floors 1 and 2, and School Administration on Floor 3. We additionally are funding an additional $280,000 from federal funding, the Opera Funding, which was provided during COVID, that we're proposing to use for, again, more HVAC units. This is for RTAC 5 and RTAC 6. And finally, LCTV is requesting $48,000, which is going to be paid out of our Public Education and Government Fund. So that totals to $3,309,47. So when we, back to our operating budget, the key things that you'll see on that operating budget, that are new initiatives for us, really are a lot of personnel. Some of those things that we'll be proposing, and that's included in this town meeting, include three new firefighters, one new police officer, one part-time administrative staff person in HR, a new administrative coordinator for our buildings, and Board of Health Commissioner, and additional hours also for the conservation staff. So when we combine all of that together, we are looking at an operative, total operating budget of 73, for fiscal year 2025, of $73,691,273. And what that means is essentially, we have, we're under budget by just about $54,000. So just meeting under that standard. Again, the effort to do this was aided through the great support that we have here, our wonderful staff here in Littleton, department heads working closely with them, our finance team, and as well as our Finance Committee and the Select Board. So I'm very appreciative of all the assistance to get to that point, such that we can provide to you, a town meeting, a balanced budget, and without the need for an override. So my sincere thanks to everyone on that, and I look forward to seeing everyone at town meeting. With that said, Tim, I'll send it back to you.
Thank you, Ryan. I'm now going to look to you, Jim, to explain the next several articles. We've got the Water Enterprise Fund budget, the Sewer Enterprise budget, and so forth. So could you take a shot at those for us?
Happy to, love to. Article 5, it's what we're asking town meeting is to vote on, to appropriate $60,420 from the Water Bedderment Fund for the payment of debt issued with the Littleton Point Project. And also within that, Article 5 is to appropriate $8,414,860 to finance the Water Department Article number 6, we want to look to authorization from town meeting to vote to transfer $1,900,000 from the Capital Outlay Improvements line item to special purpose appropriation. That's to cover the cost of water line replacement in tandem with the Littleton Common Sewer Project. Article 7, seeking approval to appropriate $200,000 from the Sewer Bedderment Fund for debt payment for the Littleton Common Sewer Project, and also appropriate $698,249 from the Sewer Enterprise Fund for the Sewer Department operations. Going on to number, Article 8, we want to borrow, appropriate or transfer $730,000 to purchase 36.49 acres of the Webster property. As people will remember, that this was at the last town meeting, and it was narrowly defeated, but this year, after two appraisals, this is going to be the purchase price for the town for a beautiful piece of land.
Thank you, Jim. We're now going to go back to Assistant Town Administrator Ryan Farrar to talk about Articles 9 and 10, and the Community Preservation Committee.
Thank you, Tim. Now we're going to talk about Article 9, which is a free cash transfer to the Community Preservation Committee Blended Fund. Part of the reason that we have been pursuing this as part of a fiscal strategy from the town is to be able to put money into that account, which then is available for a match from the state. That amount, that match, if you will, has changed over the years at different levels, but it has provided the town the chance to be able to take advantage of that match and be able to use the funds generated from the match for future capital needs. And so the items that we are proposing to fund through that include monies for, for the CPC Housing Resources Fund for Grimes Lane, as well as Jones Meadow. We're also proposing to fund the Long Lake Dock replacement, and that's about $42,000. Another few transfers here to provide funding for the annual debt service for Lucy's Land, Cobb's Lane, Boxborough Road, and as well as the improvements to the Holton Building. Finally, we're also proposing to pay $118,350 to provide a debt service payment for the first-year debt service needed to construct the new tennis courts at the high school. So this, again, is a strategy where we're trying to maximize taxpayer dollars that are generated through the CPC to be able to get additional, generate additional revenue from this. So it's a regular thing that we do, and it's provided great benefits to the town. Moving along, Article 10. Article 10 is actually the CPC FY25 budget. This includes obligations that the CPC has agreed to move forward with, with the CPC funds, which is generated as a separate fee on your taxes. So notable items to highlight for you for this upcoming year is our traditional transfers into our various accounts, but also specifically to, for other elements such as the contributions to the Clean Lakes for harvesting of different material in Long Lake, floating removal of Long Lake, that's about $50,000 to remove some of that material, it's a separate item also in Long Lake, $1,600 for chestnut harvesting in Dulphel Pond, $20,000 for the replacement of a boat launch at Mill Pond, $32,110 for the resurfacing of 300 King Street, which is our basketball courts, it's about time for another resurfacing there to keep those conditions, those courts in good conditions. We have the replacement of the dock at Long Lake, and finally, $90,000 contribution from Community Housing Reserve to the Littleton Affordable Housing Trust. This is an article that you should be, you know, it's a traditional article in town meeting to fund all of the great projects that come before the CPC and that have been approved by this separate committee to come before you, town meeting. And that concludes the overview on Articles 9 and 10, and with that, I would bring it back to Tim. So thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. I'm now going to rely upon Jim to take Articles 11 and 12. Article 11 is the potential sale of the Nagog Hill Orchard. Jim?
It is. We're authorizing, town meeting looking to authorize the Select Board to declare the Nagog Hill Orchard property surplus and to, and the Nagog Hill Orchard Ad Hoc Working Group to draft and issue an RFP to sell it. So within that, they will outline the scope of services in which they would like to see a future owner of that property and can continue with that property moving forward in the manner it is, hopefully. Article 12 is to, is a vote to transfer $2,981,047 to renovate the former Indian Hill Music School, 3236 King Street. $3,381,047 for a total, was the total project budget. However, the town, back at the last town meeting in November of '23, allocated $400,000. So ultimately, and the, what it's, you take that $400,000 off the 3.3 million, it gives you that $2,981,047. Within that, you will find the cost of construction and then of $2,180,000, and then the balance of that is soft costs, moving, furnishing fixtures, security, technology, et cetera. So that is an exciting project moving forward.
Thanks, Jim. We'll now hear from Town Planner, Maran Toohill, who's going to talk about the article regarding the MBTA Communities Zoning Bylaw. This is something that was on a prior town meeting, coming back again, hopefully for approval, and I will hear from Maran on that particular article.
Thank you, Tim. My name is Maran Toohill. I'm the Town Planner for the Town of Littleton. It's been my honor to work for the town for the last 27 years. Littleton Planning Board has drafted and is proposing Article 13, MBTA Communities Zoning Bylaw. I will turn it over to Emily Innis, President and Founder of Innis Associates, to give us some detail on what the MBTA Communities work is, and just a quick overview of the proposed zoning bylaw. Emily, over to you.
Great, thank you very much, Maran. I'm going to start off with an overview of the MBTA Communities Act. This is a law that was passed in 2021 by the state legislature, and it establishes a requirement for 177 cities and towns that are MBTA communities to zone for multifamily housing. That includes at least one district of what's called reasonable size. The zoning itself cannot have age restrictions on the housing, and the housing must be suitable for families and children. All 177 communities have to meet a minimum gross density of 15 dwelling units per acre, and you will find as we go forward that each community has additional specific requirements, which we'll talk about. And for communities like Littleton, part of the district must be located within a half mile of the commuter rail, for a commuter rail community, or other transit station. And the law had a very specific purpose. Massachusetts is suffering from a housing shortage, and that includes both the number of units and the affordability of units for people who live in our communities. The Commonwealth as a whole and individual towns are at a disadvantage for competing for employers, those employees, and therefore good jobs for the community. And in communities, again, like Littleton, thinking about how housing is placed either near transit or near downtowns is really important. It's good economic policy, it's good housing policy, it's good climate policy. However, the MBTA Communities Act is not a lot of things, and that includes some things that are misinformation out there in the public. And so first of all, it's not a mandate to build housing. Zoning is not the same thing as production, and so the town is not required to build housing. Zoning allows the opportunity for private entities to build housing. It's also not a housing production target. We'll talk about those numbers in a little bit, but those numbers aren't a measure by which the Town of Littleton is going to be judged in future years. It's merely a designation of a capacity to indicate whether or not the zoning is that neighborhood of a reasonable size. MBTA zoning is not restricted to affordable housing needs. In fact, most of the housing that's produced is likely to be market-rate housing. There is the opportunity for a community to add affordable housing requirements, but those requirements are limited. Therefore, this is not a one-size-fits-all tool for housing needs. Communities have many different housing needs, and there are multiple tools to address them. This is one of those tools. And finally, it's not viewed as optional by the Commonwealth who passed the law, or the Attorney General who enforces the law. The Planning Board has done significant public outreach on this topic. There was a special town meeting, a first version of the MBTA zonings failed at that town meeting in November, and since then, the Planning Board has sponsored either specific in-depth discussions at their meetings, overview discussions of progress in thinking about the next steps. They sponsored a workshop in March and a public survey that followed on from that workshop, and they've been holding public meetings, including a public hearing on May 2nd. In addition, in April, the Select Board and the Finance Committee did vote to support the article that's going forward to town meeting. So I mentioned requirements. Littleton is designated as a commuter rail community because it has a commuter rail stop. There's a minimum requirement of 50 acres of land, and the requirement that 10 of those acres be within the station area, and again, that's a minimum, and a minimum contiguous district size of 50% of the total district size. So for 50 acres, that would be 25 acres. If there's something above 50 acres, it would be 50% of that. Minimum unit capacity is how many units under the zoning could be produced. However, as I mentioned earlier, zoning is not production, and there are many more factors that go into producing housing units that zoning, than zoning allows for. The number of units within the station area, there's also a requirement for that, and that would be a minimum of 150 units. And then finally, as noted earlier, all communities have a minimum density requirement of 15 dwelling units per acre. of 15 dwelling units per acre. In this case, that would be the unit capacity divided by the number of acres. So Littleton has a two-part strategy for compliance, and that includes areas in compliance zoning in two areas of town, fully allowed by the law and the compliance guidelines to have more than one area. The first area is the King Street Common District and three adjacent parcels that are in the Village Common District. The majority of this zoning is not being changed. The existing zoning requirements with two small modifications are consistent with the zoning requirements under the compliance guidelines of the law. So we're not changing very much in the zoning articles to make this compliant, just a little tweak on affordability and one of the other regulations. These are the parcels that we're looking at, and this combination of parcels that you're seeing here provides most of the geographic area, including that contiguity I mentioned, the units and the density required for compliance. So the town is very close to being compliant already. As I mentioned, no change to existing dimensional standards. We're adjusting the affordability, and we're incorporating some current special permit requirements for, within the zoning, into part of the site plan review process for these parcels. The second part of the strategy is the Littleton Station area, and I mentioned that some of the geographic area and some of the unit capacity must be within the half mile of the station. And unfortunately, King Street and the Village Common together can't meet that geographic requirement. So the second part is the Littleton Station area, and that's been the primary point of discussion for most of this process. So on April 4th, the Planning Board, after listening to significant public input, chose 295 and 305 Foster Street at their meeting. There had been nine scenarios that were discussed earlier in March. And this is what that looks like. So you can see the area map showing overall the two parcels that we're talking about and their relationship to 495, Taylor and Foster Street. And then on the right-hand side, a more zoomed-in view of the two parcels and their relationship to the commuter rail station. So the strategy for compliance is to put both of those parcels together, apply zoning parameters, and we see that together they are more than the 10 acres within the station area, they are more than the 150 units within the station area, they are less than the 15 units per acre, but that works because King Street and Village Common together are, well, more than the 15 units per acre, and the town has to have the average be at 15 units per acre. And in this case, they also provide a little bit of a cushion. EOHLC, or the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, may reduce the calculated capacity or density. So in both the Littleton Station area and in the King Street Common and Village Common area, there is a little bit of a cushion to allow for that potential reduction. So if you put both areas together, the Littleton Station area and the King Street Common, Village Common District area together, you find that the zoning that is proposed for town meeting is completely compliant along all of the measures that we're looking at. And then finally, just to show you the dimensional standards that are being used in the zoning, these were put into what's called the compliance model and tested to ensure that they would produce the unit capacity, the geographic area, and the density that brings the town to compliance. So it is one acre zoning. Most of the rest of the requirements were taken based on the existing zoning for the area, which is the industrial zoning, and looking at current conditions of residential in the area, making sure that these would match up. And that's particularly true with a front setback of 50 feet. So finally, the proposed zoning, you saw the dimensional standards. The rest of the strategy is a new overlay district that covers these two parcels that gives the property owners the option of choosing the existing zoning or the overlay district if they decide they want to do something different with their property. Again, zoning is an option for future use. It is not a requirement for that use. The zoning would allow multifamily as a right, consistent with the law, based on those dimensional standards shown and the setbacks that were also discussed. We added a limitation on the building sizes to more, no more than 12 units per building. This breaks up the building size and massing so that there would be multiple buildings, potentially multiple buildings on a lot rather than one large building. It establishes a specific site plan review process and development standards for the Planning Board, allows the Planning Board to add design guidelines to be used in that site plan review process, and requires 10% affordability at 80% of AMI or the Area of Median Income. And with that, I would like to pass it back over to Maran.
All right. Thank you very much, Emily. Article 13, as we've discussed, is the result of a lot of work by the Planning Board, by staff, by consultants, and listening to a lot of input from residents and stakeholders. As Emily mentioned, the Select Board, the Finance Committee, and the Planning Board have all voted to support Article 13. The Planning Board's discussion will continue next at the May 2nd meeting. And then obviously, on town meeting floor, we'll have, the board will have a brief presentation on the work to date. We urge your support, and if you have any questions, always feel free to reach out to the Planning Department. My email, my phone number are all on the Planning Board page of the town website. Thank you very much, Emily. And Tim, back to you.
Thanks, Maran. Now we have quite a stretch of articles, Jim, that I'm going to ask you to provide a little background on. A number of these probably will be on the consent agenda. They have been in past years, and they represent kind of necessary, if not that interesting business that the town must do on an annual basis. Although there are some other things that are thrown in there. Why don't we start with Article 14, Departmental Revolving Funds?
Sounds great. Sounds great. Thank you, Tim. We want to be able to, with those revolving funds, we want to be able to, we'd like to vote to establish the spending limits for those, for the multiple departments within the article on their revolving fund, so it'll limit how much they can spend. Article 15, it is to accept the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, to allow the Town Trust Funds to be invested using the prudent investor rule. It gives the commission the better flexibility in recommending investment strategies for the Town's trust funds. Article 16 is a request to transfer $44,000. And it is for the, $40,000 for the Russell Street Elementary School, for the design, construction, and equipment, for relaxation and mindfulness room for students grades three through five that have autism and complex needs. Funding for that is from a series of different trust funds. And finally, $4,000 for the Animal Assistance Care Program to help for income-qualified families to care for, to care for their dogs with vet bills and things of that nature. Article 17 is to amend the May of 2022 town meeting article that expands the eligible uses for the acquisition and maintenance of conservation land or preservation of water quality. This kind of, this, this one, Tim, works hand in hand with the next one. In Article 18, it's a vote to appropriate $20,000 for, to give the Conservation Commission a few different things to do. For example, new and improved parking lots, boardwalk construction, vegetation management, invasive species control. So those pretty much go hand in hand.
Right. And basically, the change is needed to, to give cons comm more flexibility in how they can use those funds?
That's exactly right. Spot on, Tim. Then we'll go to Article 19 is to appropriate $1,493,000 from free cash for a variety of capital projects and purchases. And there's about a page and a half here that, that is in, that is in the booklet that people can refer to at town meeting to, to see some wonderful, wonderful projects and much-needed equipment all the way around. Moves us on to Article 20, and that's to appropriate $241,145.28 from free cash for a variety of projects and purposes also that through a number of different things that are going to, that would take place also. And that has to do with different transfers for understanding special revenue fund, to understand Human Resource Office, to update the classification compensation code, things of that nature. Article 21 is to amend the June 2021 town meeting by increasing the amount borrowing from $1 million to $1.5 million for the design and construction of the senior center. So all we're doing there, Tim, is just increasing our abilities from million to one.
That's right. And some voters might see a senior center project and get nervous, they know that it's under construction, but it's more of a technical change than anything else, right?
It really is. It's because, as you know, you, you borrow money as the project continues to go, is in, continues to be built, because it takes 12 to 14 months to build something like that. Article 22 is to appropriate $458,006 for salaries, expenses to the operation of Littleton Community Television. And this is as a result of all the hard work and the dedicated employees were able to, to bring this to you, ready in your household. Article 23 is to amend the employer bylaw classification and compensation plan by applying a 2.5% salary scheduled adjustment. And this is something that's been done in the past, that this, what you're looking at, at town meeting is you'll see the adjustment from, from the previous, from the previous grid, that is increase of 2.5%. Article 24 is really to adhere to the town's policy that 1% of the total general fund capital plan be transferred into capitalization fund. That amount is, is going to be $1,499,882. And the balance, after this, after this transfer is, is done, would be $3,585,004. And this is one of the things that is, one of the many things that is key to keeping our AAA bond rating, that we just recently got notification that we are in very, very strong financial position. And the town has done a great job over the years of maintaining that and securing that. And so that's, that's just, that's wonderful. Not many communities can say that, I will tell you that. Article 25 is to transfer $657,000 from the Capital Stabilization Fund to reduce the amount borrowed to purchase 3236 King Street property. Originally back in February in 20, in 2023 town meeting, authorized to borrow $3.5 million. Now we're going to reduce that by this, this $657,000, which would give us a total of $2,843,000. So it's great, it's going to be a lot less.
And this was always part of the plan, I should say, or let you say, that the town always hoped to reduce the amount of the borrowing.
Right.
By using these funds, and here it is.
Yes, exactly. It's, it's, this is, that's, that's perfect, that's a perfect application for those funds. Article 26, establish a school building stabilization fund for the construction, rehabilitation of existing or new school buildings, and to transfer $1,180,000 from free cash. This is really something that I think is fantastic. I, I haven't seen that in my career, but Littleton has, it's a school stabilization fund, which is, kudos to, to the town, and that, and that's why we have such a fantastic school system, I think, here. Everyone, everyone is very, very proud of, but recognizing that, that fiscal responsibility is, is, is key. Article 27, to vote to appropriate $349,878.99 from Debt Exclusions Stabilization Fund to reduce the cost of debt onto Littleton taxpayers for projects previously voted on. That, that again, is something that is rare in, in the economy today within, in local governments, and this is, this is fantastic, the attention that the, that the town pays for, and the Select Board pays, and the Finance Committee paid to, to make sure this, this occurs. Article 28, vote to appropriate $2,604.17 of money received from Commonwealth Transportation Infrastructure Enhancement Trust Fund. It's basically, it's funded from companies like Lyft and Uber. Municipalities get, with a certain population, get, get a certain amount of it. And we are allocating this for that money to go to be utilized through DPW to help with crosswalks, road markings, et cetera.
Yeah. And requires a town meeting vote to appropriate the monies, I guess.
Yes, sir.
That's why we're, yeah.
Yep.
This is coming forward.
Just a couple left.
Sure.
All right.
Home stretch.
Yeah, the home stretch. Article 29, we have been successful, we, we are in this year of negotiating the coalition bonding agreements with four of the unions. That's police, fire, DPW, and dispatchers. And we have, we're optim, we're saying that we have been successful in, with three of those four bargaining units, we've come to an agreement with them, and that's, which is, which is excellent news. We do not have a dollar amount for this as of yet, but we will, that will be part of a handout that's going to be handed to everybody at town meeting on next Tuesday, May 7th.
So that there will be some dollar amount for this article?
There will be.
I guess, I guess my question goes back, we're going to have voted the operating budget probably an hour or two previous to this. How does that play into anything, or can we adjust it, I guess maybe in the fall, going forward?
Going forward, right. Exactly.
Okay.
And the last article before it goes into citizen petitions is, it's an article to approve the town from withdrawing from the Nishoba Associated Boards, Boards of Health, be effective 7/1/2025. As everyone may know, that the Board of Health advocated and for a director, to have an independent director and not share, have a, have a shared responsibility for the community. And, and we have a new health director that just started approximately two months ago, Mr. Francis Stagel, and he's been doing a fantastic job. And so we, but this requires, according to their bylaws, that we have to stay, we had to stay into them for one year prior to actually taking the official, taking officially leaving. And, and that's it.
Okay. Thanks, Jim. And as Jim mentioned, there are, there are three citizens petitions at the end of the warrant, Articles 31, 32, and 33. And just a word about citizens petitions, for an annual town meeting, all it takes is 10 signatures of voters, not a very high bar, to get an article on the town meeting warrant. The Select Board is obligated to accept it, no matter what the topic, and no matter how it's phrased. And therein, is part of the, the problem we sometimes have with citizens petitions, the Select Board can't fix the language of the petition. They have to accept it verbatim, and sometimes it's not in proper legal form. And I know the town encourages people to, to seek out the Select Board or, or, you know, and they can in turn call town council, before they, they circulate a petition for signatures to make sure that it's in, but it always kind of turns out the opposite way. They get the signatures, and then they're locked into that language that goes to town meeting. And sometimes it can be fixed at town meeting, sometimes it can't, and sometimes there's misunderstanding, the voters get quite upset when they can't do what they think they wanted to do at town meeting, and it's sometimes a result of poor communications. But, and I know council's looking at, at some of these, there may be some additional language that can be brought forth in terms of the motions under these citizens petitions in order to improve them. I know in one case, there's a proposed general bylaw regarding marijuana establishments, and that's probably better handled than the zoning bylaw, so there may be some issues with that one, and also some of the other ones, you know, might require some additional language. We don't know at this point, we haven't seen motions from those petitioners, and, and that's kind of the key, that they're sort of providing their own language. The town can't take responsibility for a citizen's petition, can't offer an amendment to fix it, you know, without the approval from, you know, the citizens. So stay tuned on those, they may, they may or may not go forward, and, and, you know, if they do, I'm sure there'll be a robust discussion as to how they got there and what we can do maybe next time to improve upon it. In any event, that's the warrant. I don't know, did we, did we talk at all about the electronic voting, Jim? Maybe we'll take a minute to talk about that. Maybe we'll take a minute to talk about that. This will be the first town meeting we, we have the electronic voting. We think people will adapt to it pretty quickly. It's, everyone will get a small handheld device, and it's, it's pretty simple, there's a green button for yes and a red button for no. And there'll be an opportunity, a thirty-second window in which people can cast a yes or a no vote. You can change your mind, and, and as long as you know that the last button you push is the one you're going to be recorded, is voting. So it'll be an interesting, you know, be interesting for us, and I'm sure, you know, we'll, I know, I know, I'll probably make a number of mistakes at, you know, the podium, dealing with it for the first time, but I know the board wants it to work, and it's something the voters have been interested in, don't you think, Jim?
I do. You, you made it perfectly clear that, Tim, that it's, 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 it's going to make, it's going to make things so much easier. People are not going to be, feel intimidated if they want to vote a certain way, people are going to be more relaxed. There's also, they're going to be able to see the, see the results instantaneously, which helps tremendously. And coming from having experienced the, the, you know, the, the hand vote, or standing up, or the yelling vote, this has done an amazing, this will do an amazing improvement here, without a doubt. And it's something that people will, will be thrilled once they get acclimated to it. It won't take, it won't take much for them to, to get you, to get acclimated to it. But one of the things I would like to point out is, when everyone is assigned a, the clicker, it's not, it's, they're just a matter of, there's, there are no numbers that are taken down, your votes are not recorded in any way, or-
Correct, yeah.
-whatsoever. It is completely anonymous, so they give you a clicker, the just fact that, that they know that you have one, there's no record-keeping beyond, beyond that.
Yeah. No, I mean, I, I'm looking forward to it as well. I, I think you mentioned the voice voting. Over the years, I've come to appreciate the fact that the no votes are always louder than the yeses. You know, people can yell no a lot louder than sometimes people vote yes, so that'll take some of the guesswork out of it. And selfishly, I'm, I'm looking forward to people being able to see that a two-thirds vote was a two-thirds vote.
Yep.
Kind of tired of hearing people say, well, that didn't sound, you know, Tim shouldn't have called that a two-thirds, you know? It's going to be in black and white, and, you know, two, two-thirds, four-fifths, it's no longer going to be like a matter of interpretation. So we, we hope, you know, we, we think it's going to work. It's worked successfully in other towns. I know, I think Westford just had a big town meeting, and they had to borrow clickers from a number of communities. They had over two thousand people at the town meeting over the weekend, but hopefully we don't run into anything, anything like that in the near future. But we're looking forward to it. We wanted to remind you again that town meeting's Tuesday, May the seventh, in the Charlie K Gymnasium, seven PM. So we look, look forward to that, look forward to seeing you there. We thank you for taking the time to watch town meeting preview with us. Thank you.